Hey, I'm gonna open up the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's December 2022, 7:31 PM.
I will call to order the special meeting of the Wellington Board of Selectmen is 7:31 PM. And note that selectmen, you like and for select elections here in attendance.
Okay, with our Planning and Zoning Commission, members present are Bob Shavitt, Andy Marco, Doug Roberts, Rebecca Sinowski, Joseph Hall, William Benel, and Michael Johansson. And I will seat Michael Johansson for John T., who's not here. All right, no applications for receipt brings us to item D, public hearing. One, public hearing concerning opting out of the provisions of Public Act 21-29 pertaining to accessory dwelling units held jointly with the Board of Selectmen.
So, just to give a kind of a quick summary or recap. In 2021, along with a whole bunch of other stuff that was passed the legislature and we dealt with cannabis and some of the other things. One of the other components of the criteria that pertains to the Planning and Zoning Commission relates to how we have to treat accessory dwellings in our regs, they're referred to as separate family quarters. And I think you guys all have a copy of what's on the books now, just to reference. So there was a lot of legislation. A lot of, yup, the one with the yellow. A lot of legislation passed. And parts of it basically mandate that if the town does not opt out of the provisions pertaining to this established criteria, they effectively supersede any language or lack of any language that are in the regulations as of January 1st, 2023. So, I outlined all the criteria in the memo, but the highlights are you cannot require that the accessory dwelling unit be occupied by someone related to the owner of the property. Can't say it's, it's the old term of in-law apartment, it's essentially gone away. You have to allow them to be attached or detached. You cannot require them to be approved after holding a public hearing, they have to be by rights. Can't require that they be at least 1,000 square feet. Can't require that they be on separate utilities or have more restrictive setbacks than you would for something, something similar. So, the plan, and I, some of what we have on the books now complies, some of it does not. We had talked about this early on, we were gonna look at it as part of the Affordable Housing Plan. And after we came this, and then obviously with the PZ 22-10 application, which took up basically the entire summer. Rather than try to get something done by the end of the year. Opting out gives us the breathing room to take the time as long as we need to evaluate the regulations that we have and make a determination on whether we like them, whether we want to change them. Opting out does not prohibit the town from adopting the regulations exactly as outlined by the state. We can, we can look at it, take our time and say, you know, we agree with it. It just gives us the ability to make those decisions without the, someone showing up on January 2nd and saying, hey, I'd like my detached ADU that I'm gonna rent out to X, Y, and Z person, and we would have to give them the permit in the office. The other reason for this is that there is some consensus, but I don't know, concern, if you will, that we cannot opt out after January 1st, 2023. And should the criteria or the language within the legislation change after that? There's a thought that someone could make the argument, well, you can't opt out because it's after January 1st. So now, whatever we change in this legislation, you've got to deal with it. Probably unlikely, but never hurts to be safe on that. So, our commission attorneys had recommended that you're even thinking about it, just opt out. Because it doesn't prevent you from doing anything on the road. The last thing that the requirement includes is that should the Planning and Zoning Commission opt out to make that decision effective, the Board of Selectmen in this case would also have to opt out. Which is why they're in attendance at this meeting, because they need to, needs to be done by both organizations. So that's a long short, I guess.
I agree that the accessory dwelling units require quite a bit more deliberation. And I think this is a good option to buy us some breathing room, especially, you know, while we, while we do that. I don't think we want to get, you know, have buyer's remorse here in a, in three weeks. You know, that undoubtedly, there's no good stuff in there that we want to consider, but we also want to be able to, you know, go back and forth and discuss among ourselves the pros and cons of these different things. So that being said, questions, comments from the commission or the Selectmen?
I agree with that position.
I think it's a good avenue to take.
Okay.
Is there a timeframe that we have to actually review it within and make a decision if we opt out right now?
That's a good question. Mike?
No. So, once we opt out, the regulations that we have on the books will just remain in effect until basically, you can review them, but you don't actually have to. You can just say we like what we have and opt out and never do anything with it. So it's not like a moratorium in that way where we have some clock.
So Mike, from the Board of Selectmen's perspective, if if both boards choose to opt out, and then the Planning and Zoning Commission makes changes to their current regulations, there's no action after that where the Board of Selectmen are involved. It's just simply this opt-out of this new statute of language. Interesting.
I think that for some towns, you know, particularly with accessory dwelling units, there's a concern. Places like Mansfield obviously has a concern for rentals in the whole student market. Places closer to Hartford and as you get south really have I don't know that they've seen it, but there is concern that it effectively could double the density in certain areas. If you have small lots that are 10,000 square feet and everybody starts putting up, you know, these 200 square foot, 300, 400 square, whatever they are, little accessory dwellings in their backyard, you're effectively doubling the densities of your neighborhoods. I don't think that's what anybody has seen, but that's where the concern lies. And a lot of towns still have requirements that these ADUs be done by special permit, which is not allowed per the bill. So you by opting out, we could, we could, we could adopt all the criteria, but just keep it as a special permit this commission wanted to review it, so. But I guess that's a long way of saying in other places, it's a little bit more of a political hot button issue. So I think they tried to make it more of a community conversation by requiring both boards to make the decision.
So we could choose, you know, if, if the decision of the PC is to opt out and the Selectmen also agree to opt out, you still have the ability to make additional changes to your regulation, however you feel best suits willing.
Yeah.
Following the usual planning and zoning.
Public hearing, referral to CROG, the whole nine years. Yup.
This sounds like it was just a way to kind of make everybody feel better about the process they put in place. They give everyone a voice initially.
And in the public hearing process, if we do, you know, do move on it next year, you know, we're gonna get the public's input, you know, how they feel about this and use it to weigh in on.
At that point, we're just simply numbers of the public.
Yes. All right, any, any further comments or questions around this table here? All right, let's, let's open it up to the public. Anyone in this audience in front of me? Do you have anything to say about it? Name please and where you live?
Uh, it's up here, same, 48 Myrtle Road.
Okay.
It just brought, brought my attention, because I was looking to put an in-law suite into my house and part of the design process with my wife and just, I think it would be also taking into consideration the school meeting that I was just in where the mill rate may potentially go up in order to accommodate a new school, having something like this maybe helps offset fixed income individuals who actually have in-law suites or in-law dwellings. I was thinking about the in-law dwelling myself, about how long will my in-laws actually be there? I'm gonna build it for, maybe they may be there for 10 years, they won't be here for another 10, maybe here for 10, just for average lifespan. My mother will come in at 70 and probably leave at 80, just based on statistics. And then, so what do I do with that space it now? I think this gives us the option of not changing the feel of Wellington by changing the zoning from a single-family residential, which is what we are right now mostly, to now a duplex or apartment building. Because now if the next person sells their land and have changed and created an in-law or an ADU, and their zoning is now changed to a duplex, now we have a new type of development being built in the town, which I'm not sure we would want. So, I do like the idea of opting out right now, but I would strongly encourage us to set a timeline of when we would look at these changes, because I think it makes Wellington attractive for new family members to come in.
Thank you. All right, anyone online that wants to comment? Ralph, I see, Ralph Tulis.
Oh, yes, Ralph Tulis, 47 Villas Hill Road. I have some questions about this public act. Exactly what portion of this act are we opting, opting out of? Because it seems to me there's also a requirement in there that Planning and Zoning members have to attend training.
There is. This is accessory dwelling units as a matter of right.
I understand, but I, I tried reading the public act. And it's a nightmare to make sense out of exactly what they're saying. And the consequences of Public Act 21-29 has not been incorporated into the Connecticut General Statute yet. Which is my usual go-to source to read through and understand exactly what the legislature is expecting of us and our state's residents. So I just want to make sure, you know, I, I don't like the idea that we would be forced to accept ADUs wherever someone wanted to do it. Obviously, I think, and Mike can correct me if I'm wrong. The Health Department would still have a say in this. I mean, can we put two dwelling units into one septic system? I think that creates an issue for us. Certainly in a more urban or suburban area where you have public sewers, that's kind of a non-issue. And then the other thing is water, potable water. Is that going to be supplied by the original dwelling or is it going to require a separate well? Particularly for detached ADUs. So I don't have a problem opting out of this. I think that's probably a wise move for the town of Wellington. I just want to make sure some of the other more desirable aspects of PA 21-29 are kept. And I think we should be more specific with respect to what sections we are opting out of. I noticed another town got a very detailed memorandum or statement coming from both the Planning and Zoning and the legislative body. What I see from us is something very, very brief, and I would hope that Mike could speak to that, make it clear for everyone. I think that's all on this topic for now.
Thank you, Ralph. Donna Cook.
Um, thank you. I, I too attempted to read through Public Act 21-29 and had a lot of concerns, so I'm encouraged that you're considering opting out. But it looked like you had to opt out of multiple, in multiple spots. Because when I was reading through, it seemed like it was a little repetitive. And so I don't know if there, is there a, well, the question, one of the questions is, is there a universal opt-out? Or do you have to do it for multiple spots? Like on their page 12 of 28, it talks about opting out, and then I saw it then again in another spot, which I cannot get my fingers on right now. So that was one thing. And the other thing is, it looked like this was gonna require you to have a plan to increase affordable housing at least once every five years to re, to relook at the plan. And, and that way, um, what percentage of our housing in Wellington is considered affordable housing right now?
Seven percent.
And what percentage are we, do they want everybody to have?
Hundred percent. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but I believe that's correct.
We only touch on some of the.
Yeah, why don't you just touch on it a little bit? We're not opting out of all of affordable housing. I want you to make that clear.
You really are only two, two components to the act that you can opt out of. This, this one and another one related to the number of parking spaces that you can require for a multifamily. Basically can't require more than one per unit, which is not inconsistent with what we have anyways. You can opt out of the commissioner training or really any other provision.
When does that take effect? Because we're gonna have to consider that commissioner training.
The commissioner training is, it's, it rolls out beginning in 2023, but it's, there's sort of it'll be phased in that there's, there's gonna be some stuff that they're.
Four hours, right?
Right. And there's things they're presenting now, which you can basically watch the recording of. It will be easily obtained. But the, the legal notice that was run and the way that it was listed on the agenda is a public hearing concerning opting out of the provisions of Public Act 21-29 pertaining to accessory dwellings. Because that's what we're focusing on now. So, the other questions, there are specifics within the act, which basically say that we cannot require that, that the dwelling, accessory dwelling unit be served by separate utilities. And that the Health Department cannot treat them as community wastewater systems. So under to current provisions, if you have two buildings discharging to the same system, it elevates the review requirement with the Health Department. So the bill basically says if it's a detached ADU, you can't look at it that way.
So we can, we can overtax a septic system or we can overtax a well?
No, it just, it just means that they look at it like if you were adding a bedroom above your, you know, bonus room of your garage. Rather than making the ADU perhaps build an entirely separate septic system, they can show that the design of the current system can support an increase in one bedroom and have that, that unit discharged to the existing septic. And I'm not a health expert, but there's language in the bill to basically make it not a complete barrier. But they still have to go through all the health criteria to demonstrate flow and design, capacity, reserve, all of that stuff is the same. So
So as a follow-up to what was just said, I know when we built our house, we decided to erase a wall and remove a bedroom because in order to accommodate the number of bedrooms, I was told that when the, there's a formula based upon two people per bedroom living there all year round, and it really didn't matter how big my personal family was, because if we sold our house, it could accommodate a much larger family. And so this septic system had to be able to accommodate that. So we changed our floor plan to remove a room, because the additional cost 20 years ago to have the appropriate septic system was gonna be an additional $20,000. So, um, I would hope that if someone putting in an accessory building at any point in time, that that would be carefully reviewed, because that, that's an extensive cost. And, you know, we're all, most of us are on septic here and, and well water, so that has to be taken care of. So, all right, thank you so much for your time. And, and I hope that, it sounds like you guys want to opt out, and I'm hoping Wellington does opt out of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
The other thing I just wanted to add related, was related to affordable housing. So the other thing that the, the language includes is that you know, we're all trying to get to this 10%, which is this goal that was established that for towns that aren't there and aren't close, it's gonna be really hard to ever do. But the, but every time you add a dwelling unit, you're moving further away from your 10%. So, you know, the, there was some concern that encouraging accessory dwelling units, we're gonna add dwelling units to the books. So if we add 1,000 dwelling, accessory dwelling units, now our percentage is gonna be drastically reduced.
So it works, right?
So it, it also specifically states that any accessory dwelling unit that is added does not count towards the, the total unit count for the purposes of determining the 7%. So if we add 100 accessory dwelling units, that's not gonna take us 100 units further from our 10% goal. So they're not included in the count. They want it to be something that, that towns, you know, at least consider and encourage in some way. So it won't make, it won't affect our focus on 10%.
Okay. Any, any further questions from anyone in the public? Comments?
Just clarification. Just to clarify, the accessory dwelling.
Your name once again.
Would accessory dwelling units add, add to our 7%? And get us closer to the 10%? Or are you saying it would take us further away from?
To wash.
It's a wash.
Yeah, if, if they were deed restricted as affordable, then it would add to the seven. But if we just added as, and you rented it out to, or had a family or occupy, it wouldn't then take us further away, because now we've added another unit.
Right. Is there wording in the legislation that we're opting out of? How much the unit would need to be rented at in order to be considered affordable?
Would have to be deed restricted for a period of 40 years at 30%. Deed restricted. So the seven and change that we have now are effectively the. Yeah, and so those are deed restricted. And so to qualify outside of any type of a federal housing or any, you know, some of the other larger projects, deed restricted for 40 years at, at 30% of 80% of area median income, which is established by HUP. So we would run the calculation, which is suggested every year.
We have the same address. So if I put one at my house, 48 Myrtle Road, it'd be 48 Myrtle Road would be the mailing address for this ADU as well?
Yeah, more than likely.
It's deeded for 40 years to be an affordable AMI.
So the only thing that would just, you would have to, to get, you'd just have to verify that whoever was occupying that unit had the income of that criteria. And so you, it would be deed restricted. And in Wellington, we've run the numbers, it's north of $1,000. It's probably in the 1,200 range would be my guess. You adjusted based on bedroom count and some other stuff. It, it's not like $300 a month or something like that, but the, the hangup, why we don't see it very often is because it's 40 years. And then after 40, it comes off, that restriction comes off the book. So even if you continue to rent it, if the deed restriction doesn't remain, doesn't count towards the percentage.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Looks like we don't have any more questions, anything other than a select, select man, select woman or the commission?
I'm good.
All right, I understand.
Can I, I just want to make sure I understand. There's two sections, right? Makes of the ADU section as well as the parking minimum.
Which we're, we're not doing that tonight.
We're not.
We're not taking up that at all.
This is just, this is just for the accessory dwellings.
Do we have to opt out of the parking minimum?
We're not, it's not really different than what we have. It's so there's no, there's no change that, you know, it's not like we require four spaces per unit, because we don't allow most of them. You know, we don't have, you can't have apartments, you know, we can't have a 25-unit apartment here, so we don't have this parking standard, which says we can only require one space per unit. It doesn't, there's no language which would really supersede. And, and it's, yeah, that's.
So by not opting out of that, and your discussion about changes later on that could come to the act, are we now beholden to that because we didn't choose to take any direction on our own? Is there, is there some risk there?
I think that was what was most sort of tricky for me when that was mentioned, because you can only opt out of specific provisions, and there's two of them. And whether you opt out of one or two, if they add a third, you couldn't opt out of something that didn't exist prior to it coming into play. So I think it was more related to if, you know, they changed something to say accessory dwelling units now, you know, I don't know. Don't need a septic system. I don't know, something crazy. If they changed the requirements for the specific provision, which you could have opted out of. As far as the parking goes, I don't know what they could do for parking calculations for multifamily. I'm not sure how that would really be modified. That would be something that like could be cause for concern, I mean.
We have the option to opt out. We don't. I just want to make sure we understand if there's any risk involved and not.
Imagine, imagine if you build a multifamily building, you have enough parking there.
Yeah. And that's, yeah, I mean, effectively, they build what they know they need. But.
Doesn't happen here, but it happens.
Yeah, no, certainly does.
Yes, more often, which is why. Yeah.
Yeah, the easy answer is we advertise it as an opt-out for the ADUs. That's all we can do tonight anyways. We can certainly talk about it at the next meeting if we want.
I was just gonna say, because you're at the same time, so.
We, we have the time.
We have one more meeting.
If we, if, yeah, I mean.
All right, okay. All right, so procedurally, would, would I close this, like, make a motion to close this like any other public hearing even? Okay, they don't have to make any motion of their own.
The statute doesn't even expressly require that they have their own public hearing. So basically, this is a Planning and Zoning hearing. Be hard for them to opt out of something that they hadn't heard when anybody had to say about it.
I'm gonna make a motion.
Did Andy want to say anything?
Andy, Andy, you want to say anything? We can't hear you, Andy.
He's talking, but there's no sound.
Andy, looks like an old karate movie. We'll dub it in.
He can hear us.
All right. I think your sound is on the fritz there, Andy.
Check your microphone.
Turn up your volume or something.
Plug in some headphones.
We've been doing this long enough.
Are you there, Andy?
Andy could phone in. He could phone in.
He's trying to sign like.
Scribble on a piece of paper and hold it up.
I think he's good. He just waved it off. All right, all right. All right, so I'm gonna make a motion to close public hearing concerning opting out of provisions of Public Act 21-29 pertaining to accessory dwelling units. And it was held jointly with the Board of Selectmen.
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Which brings us on to item number two, PZ-22-18, text amendment pertaining to modifications of 5.05.01.02.24. For dimensional requirements applicant Joseph Williams.
I don't mind, I got some notes to my. I'm Patrick Petersio with Suncap Property Group, Ben Cherry, we're the developers for the project. Joe Williams, our land use counsel. We, this is our third meeting in as many months on this text amendment for the purpose of, one, making the text consistent on surface parking being approved used in the DI's, and two, basically reconstituting a 50% allowable impervious coverage to be applicable in a surface parking lot where it's affiliated with a warehouse distribution user within a mile of a parking lot. So I want to recap first couple meetings for, you know, a lot of.
Can I bring one thing up? This is a continuation from the last meeting, by the way. This is the same public hearing. It was continued, so just for the record.
Yeah, and there's some, some folks were not present at the last meeting, so. And then and I also want to hit some of the question, outstanding question comments. We talked about the last one. And then before handing it off to Joe to kind of review the text itself. And then, you know, like to ask. And then, you know, like to ask the commission to to make a decision on the matter tonight, um, if if it feels so so compelled. Uh, so in our first, first meeting, we introduced the proposed text amendment and the commission responded with questions about site plan, uh, who the user was, uh, traffic impact concerns. Um, really wanted to know what it was that we were doing. And, uh, we we kind of just deferred giving answers until the next meeting because, um, we weren't able to really give a whole lot of information. And so we came back, we, uh, brought a site plan, presented a site plan and who the user was, the, this is, it's going to be overflow parking for cars, vans, tractor trailers uh, for the FedEx facility on Ruby Road. Um, and it's about a mile south of the FedEx facility. So traffic will be limited to that one mile stretch of Ruby Road. And we also, um, kind of reiterated that this project is going to be subject to OSTA approval. So to kind of, uh, ease some of the concerns about traffic. Um, and then, uh, at the second meeting, or at that second meeting, the, uh, the town still expressed some concerns about traffic and also about the surrounding land around the FedEx while we weren't developing there. And those were kind of the main takeaways that we we brought from that second meeting. And, uh, with regards to surrounding land, we discussed with the end user as well as Army Corps engineers. And, um, the the end user did consider that as an option initially and, uh, really quickly turned away from it when they learned that there was a conservation easement on that land. And, um, but we we still had a conversation with the Army Corps to talk about what it would take. And basically, it's a, it's a lengthy minimum eighteen month process as well as astronomical costs is kind of we would expect. And, uh, it would require concurrence from s- uh, from state and local as well as the Corps. And we're not likely to get, at least the Corps, they they admittedly said the purpose of these conservation easements is to have the land set aside in perpetuity. So it kind of defeat the purpose for them to, um, relinquish that. And so the likelihood of us being able to make that happen is just extremely low. We we're still willing to continue those conversations as we move forward, just, uh, don't think it has necessarily an impact on the text amendment that we're, uh, here to talk about today. Um, with regard to the traffic concerns, again, we are going to go through OSTA, but we understand that, um, the, that the OSTA process may not adequately address this concern. So we have had conversations with the town about some potential, um, alternate modified plans that would address other concerns and we're willing to continue those conversations um, as we move forward with the project. Again, you know, we don't think that's necessarily germane to the text amendment that we're, we're talking about tonight. And I, I think the main factor we have, the commission will consider is, uh, really a commitment, uh, commitment is existing, existing industrial users within the DI zone. Uh, we think our proposal is is not intrusive to the town, especially compared to other allowable uses within the DI zone. Um, and we understand the town has legitimate concerns and will cooperate as much as possible to address those um, throughout the process, but in order to do the, do that, we need a decision on the text amendment so we can advance design and have those conversations and figure out ways to address those concerns. So I think with that, yeah, I'll turn it over to to Joe to kind of give a further detail about the text letter, so.
Thank you. You think commissioners?
Uh, Joe Williams, I'm a partner at shipment in Goodwin, on Constitution Plaza in Hartford, I practice land use law in the state of Connecticut for a little over twenty-eight years. Just to add to what Patrick was saying and to recap for the folks who weren't here for the first night of the public hearing. As Patrick said, we have proposed amendment to your zoning regulations that does two things. First clarifies that the use of surface parking lots isn't allowed used in the DI zone where it already allows garages. And you have a table of uses that also, um, specifies that surface parking lots are allowed. So this amendment will just bring the text of the regulation consistent with what you already have at your table to allow surface parking lots. And then second, uh, with regard to maximum lot coverage, as you probably know, you have, that you have the, uh, section eight, you have a table of dimensional requirements where for some of the zones, it just gives one number total maximum coverage for a property. And then for other zones, it splits it, one number for building coverage and one number for pavement coverage. And in the DI zone, it has the split twenty-five percent each, twenty-five percent coverage for building, twenty-five percent coverage for pavement, we're proposing to do is keep that total of fifty the same, but just stay fifty and not split it between twenty-five percent to building and twenty-five percent for pavement. So our, our goal is to propose the minimum change possible, maintain the overall fifty percent impervious coverage cap that you already have in the regulation, but allow the one side or the other building or pavement to go beyond twenty-five percent between twenty-five and fifty. Uh, because the parking lot proposal that we would like to bring before you, if you adopt the text amendment, will propose something in the thirties, thirty-three, thirty-four percent somewhere in there. Uh, but we also added some restrictions to not make it universal. So we added language to footnote one in the table that states a DI lot may exceed twenty-five percent coverage for overflow surface parking associated with an off-site use only if the other use is a warehouse package distribution facility located in Wellington within a one mile radius of a parking lot. And the total lot coverage for building and pavement does not exceed fifty percent. So it restates the fifty percent. And it says that a pave pavement for an overflow parking lot can only go above twenty-five percent if it's for what we will, the type of thing that we want to propose, which is overflow parking to a warehouse or distribution facility and it's within one mile. So it limits the potential properties in town that would be able to to make use of that. And I'm happy to answer questions about it.
I have a question. This is for cars as well, it's trailers and so forth. So how, I'm assuming the cars are for employees, how do, how do the people get from the lot back to the facility? If they run a shuttle, I have this, have this work, it's a mile away.
Yeah, so ultimately, majority of the parking is for trailers, not tractors and trailers. There's some additional parking for vans and tractors. So the idea is if they need to pick up a trailer, they obviously have a tractor facility, go to the off-site parking, pick up the trailer and then go back to the facility or some other facility that may be in there.
So they got like a yard or it's like, like.
Correct. And then the idea is if they're picking up a van or a tractor and they need to pick a trailer from somewhere else, they would park their car. The parking for the actual equipment is secured, they can walk through the turnstile, grab the van or tractor and then drive to where they need to go, mostly back to the facility, leave their car. Then obviously, as they're done with that, drop it off, pick up the car.
Like, I'm just like not having a good vision in my head of like somebody walking down down the road, FedEx in the dark, down that winding road.
No, there's no implications for anybody to walk. And we've also seen people ride together to, somebody in a van, drop somebody off, off to get a van if there's not a car involved, so it's.
I I could tell you my number one concern is just thinking of that road as is and, you know, the the traffic and so forth on it. Because, uh, even going to the dump, you know, you got to watch if cars coming up over the hill and and so forth, and not everybody follows the speed limit and then, you know, just that that's a major concern of mine. You know, the addressing the the state of the road that this presently sits with.
And 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 it is a subject we will thoroughly review and vet and discuss and present to you. If you, if you pass this amendment, you're not saying our project can go forward, you just amended the regulations. Then we would go meet with engineers, do all of the thorough preparation of a plan, including a traffic study, a full traffic study and file an application for special permit. So we would come back before you have a public hearing, traffic engineer would present, you'd see the study, um, and all of those issues will be looked at. Uh, and then we would also have to do the same type of thing, not a public here necessarily, but we would have to present the traffic study to state DOT and OSTA, uh, to get their approval as well. So, um, there's a lot of, a lot of sets of eyes that will be looking at the traffic.
DOT sometimes, you know, the bare minimum will happen, it's still, you know, relatively unsafe. We had these concerns even when we had a truck stop recently go in and everything. That was one of the number one things that the public talked about. We just got to make sure we don't recreate a another situation like that.
Yeah, and we have had preliminary conversations, bouncing ideas, kind of back and forth about how to make this as safe of a, uh, access to Ruby Road as possible, as well as whatever traffic is along Ruby Road. We just haven't had the capacity to advance design because we're waiting to see what happens with the text amendment. So we'll, we'll continue those conversations and our motives are in line, we want it to be safe. We don't want, we don't want incidents or accidents there either, you know, as our end user. So, you know, we're, we're on the same page there, I think.
Any questions from the commission?
Uh, yeah, just one.
Comments, go ahead.
Yeah, so you're asking for us to go from twenty-five percent coverage for a parking lot to fifty. Usually the building is twenty-five percent and the parking lot is twenty-five percent. So we let you, if we doubled the amount of paved parking lot on that site, could you use? If it was just twenty-five percent parking, could you only use that much chemical to control the snow? What I'm saying is you're asking us to let you put a hundred times fifty percent more chemicals in that area that are subject to runoff and subject to leaching into the brook that's on that wall then, where you yourself had said that that would be where your retention basins would be. So are you planning on doing something using chemicals like the airports do? So it's not corrosive, so it is more easily, uh, taken up into the landscape?
I I think that the stormwater runoff calculation, I don't know the particular.
Asking.
I don't know the particular ways that you guys handle, handle stormwater runoff particularly here, but in in most jurisdictions, there's calculations that involve the amount of impervious coverage that dictate what you have to do in terms of treatment. We'll absolutely be doing those and complying.
Well, yes, I hear an engineering firm as part of.
Yes, we will absolutely have an engineering firm.
Well, but I mean, the fact is, is that you're doubling the amount of hardened surface. That means you're doubling the amount of runoff, you're doubling for five months, um, say that. You have to put some kind of material down for, uh, snow and ice.
Like, I get with the material, a flat roof's a hard surface too, even though you don't treat it with chemicals.
That's the big difference between twenty-five percent on the building and twenty-five percent parking.
That is the, it's the treatment for the snow and ice of building, you know, you're, you're still going to get runoff, it's not going to be treated.
Right, right, well, you haven't got any chemicals, well.
Hopefully.
You don't have. You don't have, uh, snow and ice melting material running off of the roof.
It it's a very appropriate question and it will, it will be closely reviewed and discussed. As the chair said, we'll be getting civil engineers much more involved and they will be released to do the whole thing and to to present a stormwater management plan as part of our application to you when we come back, if we come back on the next phase. So yes, that would be looked at and, you know, part of any stormwater management component of an application is often an operation and maintenance plan in which you can look at exactly what we, what you will be using and, you know, will it be affecting the resources nearby, that sort of thing. So that's all right for discussion, definitely.
That's all.
I I do have a question, and maybe I'm just not seeing this right. So you're changing the lot to fifty percent. What's to say someone comes in here and decides to build a building that's fifty percent with no paved coverage? They're just going to leave everything bare ground for their parking? What's to stop someone from putting a building up fifty percent? With the way this is worked?
It doesn't stop that.
It would have to be ancillary to an existing warehouse distribution used within a mile of the property.
It would, it would be precluded to some extent because you can't put up a, a building, I mean, the parcel is hugging.
Just under twenty.
So fifty percent coverage on a parcel of twenty acres is a ten acre building, we have minimum parking requirements. So X per thousand spaces, you could never put up a building or no parking unless you said you had indoor parking or something, but.
I I'm just curious because it, you know, playing devil's advocate seems to say.
No, it's a good point, but but we would not allow someone to just build up a building and say, no, no, I'm just going to use it for storage, I don't need parking. Because based on the building size and the use, there would be a demand for a number of spaces which the regs would require. It could be, still be low, um, but they have to do something based upon whatever that use was, even if it were just storage.
Theoretically, under the coverage limit, the building can be fifty, but realistically, when you apply the other regulations, it's impossible because you're going to have to have driveways and parking and different things that would have to ratchet that building percentage down.
The only question that I, I want to confirm, this is a, this, it truly is a parking lot. It is not a, for lack of a better word, uh, uh, like a truck stop. You're not going to have a tractor and a trailer come in, park and idle for four hours until space frees up at the facility and then this is going to be sort of dead storage, no idling, no perpetual moving.
Correct, then, as you can imagine, yeah, then user doesn't want that's the truck idling there, that doesn't make any, they, they want to be as efficient as possible, so dropping off, picking up and then leaving.
So this is basically empty trailers going to be dropped here and they're going to be picked up and brought to the loading docks and.
Majority, yes, those areas for vans, that'll be, I think about sixty, just under seventy parking spots for vans, that would be the vans you see driving around. And then, yes, some employee parking too.
Maybe you have another question. Go ahead. So just looking at your layout, how much further back are you going to remove, uh, rock? From the, uh, where the, where the rock face is now up to that second level, how are backing again, go beyond that?
I'm, I'm not sure. I'm not, I think the topo, I, I'm not sure on the distance. If you can see, we go all the way back to the wetland buffer, we obviously do not want to go into the wetland buffer, that's, that's kind of, I'm not sure, we could, we could probably overlay a little better.
Well, it never is to be, you know, for the last in that second, you know, level one.
I'm not sure on the exact distance from where the rock faces to come back, we didn't, we didn't find.
Bear in mind, we're still in, you know, conceptual plane.
No, I was just, you know, I drove past the other day, get in the. I looked up and says, you know, how much further back is that need to level that out?
Yeah.
So you, you guys are trying to get this, this, uh, text amendment number for you to go any further to see if it's basically what you're wild, what we're spending.
Yeah, there's a point where it, that's what they'd like to do, and obviously there's finances involved. Spend more finances, we need to. But that site plan is just temporarily, I mean, that's obviously what we have today. We're open to adjust that as needed.
Like, didn't you have a document that had other towns as far as comparison goes?
They submitted it during the hearing, yeah. Um, so it included Coventry, Ellington, Union, Tolland, Ashford, Stafford and Mansfield.
I only have a couple more copies of that. I'm sorry, I may have a couple more copies of that since I haven't, if you'd like to see.
I I've seen it, but I don't know.
I'd like to have a copy.
Coventry, uh, sixty percent, Ellington sixty, Union twenty-five. Special permit may be issued for increase beyond, Tolland sixty, Ashford seventy-five, Stafford, depending on the height of the building, between fifty, down thirty and then Mansfield, uh, from five percent. It is a fairly low.
Three more on me. I guess my other point that I want to bring up is that traffic studies, I mean, there was a lot of concern over loves on and the credibility of the traffic study. And I have to say, because I go by there every time I have to use eighty-four, um, I think they were spot on. I think it's for the traffic, I'm not waiting, um, because of congestion, congestion at the TA. So I think, you know, truckers know that if the TA is busy, they're going to go to loves. So it has helped, I think, improve it, so.
They still run into the opposing way.
Um, they do, but I think people are more aware now that with their business up on the hill, they're actually looking the other way.
Yeah.
Where before they weren't, they would just come off baby four, you know, going westbound and just take the left entrance. Yeah, so.
Great, other, uh, other questions or comments from the commission?
Is there any thought to doing some of the, I know we're, they're starting new ways of paving, so it's more permeable. Is there any thought to doing more permeable covers instead of a total solid asphalt where everything puts on?
So, yeah, we, we touched on that on the last meeting. We have looked into permeable uh based on kind of the chemicals that are used. The permeable becomes clogged and almost defeats the purpose and it causes the asphalt to actually fail faster. So it's in this kind of climate, it's not really the best solution just based on just the weather and the maintenance. Cut back to the original concept of the chemicals. It is done before, but it's uh not the best practice and then.
Generally, we, from what we've heard, when we were looking into this, we spoke with some engineers about who have worked with the impervious or the permeable pavement. They say within three years, most of them are impervious because they get clogged up.
They say the issue is you don't have, then you don't have a stormwater system designed for an impervious system, so it kind of solves it.
We, way back before I had any discussions with them, their DL, who's doing the site design, Chris and I met with them and based upon the way our regulations are set up, I don't think we can give them credit for impervious or pervious payers. I don't think that would reduce their total coverage and then based upon our read and their read, even a pervious paper would still count towards coverage because we don't track impervious and just lot coverage. So based upon maintenance, the way that the regs were set up, we, we basically felt like they still would probably run into the, the issue.
Further questions from the commission, but probably a lot of the public. All right, public, anyone in this room have anything to say? Okay, good, let's go to uh online. I see Mr. Coolus.
Yes, I, I will go back to the same comment that I made in the previous uh public hearing and um table eight point oh two.
Ralph, name and address for the record.
All right, sorry, Ralph Tulis, forty-seven Village Hill Road. I, I should be used to that by now. Uh, in table eight point oh two, I see no need to put fifty percent in that column. Leave the twenty-five percent uh buildings, twenty-five percent pavement. Uh footnote one in the left column refers you down to um the text that they want to add that would allow uh in a DA zone, uh, allow them to exceed twenty-five percent coverage. And their goal is set and we don't mislead subsequent applications. And we still have the ability to consider twenty-five plus twenty-five. I, I think deleting the two twenty-five percents from the table is, is a mistake. Uh, let the footnote address this specific condition, this specific applicant. It, it, if you move forward with this, that's what I think makes sense. They get what they want, but we don't mislead future applicants. Um, unless I'm really stupid and missing something here. So I welcome any further comments on it.
I got a comment on that. It's a joke. All right, uh, thank you, Ralph. Yes, sir.
I hear that they want to change the textbook. Why couldn't we just keep the text as is and provide them a special permit instead? That's just a question for the board. It seems like some other towns, as you're rattling off in percentages, uh, do allow a special permit, so just looking at that alternative, instead of going down the path of changing something that's specific to this one plan, where it's already great, why don't we use it, go to a special permit? That's my question, thank you.
So um special permits can be issued, but they have to be issued in accordance with the regs. So the, they got to change the reg first and then the, the development of the site will require a special permit. But towns, commissions can't modify or waive the requirements for certain users or applicants. So they have to change this first to establish the baseline and then they will come back for a special permit.
There's, there's no way to make this special permit, the amendment to the requirement?
No.
So the requirement supersedes all special or dictates the direction all special permits go.
Exactly. It's a baseline criteria that everybody's held to. And then the type of approval, the commission establishes special permit, site plans, whatever. But it all is based upon the zoning regs. It has to be compliant with those standards. They can't waive those.
Ralph's suggestion was interesting.
Yeah, just putting a note instead to this specific, but that changes it for just this specific site.
Yes. If it's a substantive change, there's limitation on what we can do now that it's been advertised as such, uh, and I don't know.
Could we change the special zoning or the special permit to add this note rather than that in that location? Because it seems like it's so unique that, that to have it in the regular specs seems just too specific to this proposal versus moving it over to the special permit where now you have that flexibility. It might work.
So I think one of the things that the commission may want to think about first is, is the fifty percent rule, yes, is a twenty, it's, it is a change. We're going from what was twenty-five to fifty. But is fifty completely out of line for an industrial zone parcel?
That when you look at other towns.
If the answer is no, then tweaking all this stuff doesn't matter. If the answer is yes, then we can figure out if there's another way to get there. So really, it's, our regulations are not this easy to use document anyway. So I don't know how many people go through them and say, okay, this is what we'll do. Um, we usually have to all sit together and figure out what they say. But, so I think if we figure out what you think about the fifty in, in this limited case, because again, it's not just a wide open fifty. And then we can figure out if we need to make changes from there, but just have to be careful with how we notate it so that it, it doesn't look like we've made changes beyond what was advertised. I, I think we can get there.
All right, uh, online, Nick Tella.
Hey, Nick Tella, forty-nine Myrtle. Just a clear clarification, so i- if this went through the fifty percent, would this only be for DI or would it be for DI, R eighty and different, different uh areas or is it just DI?
DI.
Thank you.
Welcome. Within a one mile radius. All right. Further questions uh from the public or comments? I think we're good. All right, I'm going to uh make a motion to close PZ dash twenty-two dash eighteen text amendment pertaining to modifications of five point oh five dot oh one, dot oh two, dot two four and table eight dot oh two for dimensional requirements applicant Joseph Williams. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, public hearings closed. On that, which brings us to uh even E unfinished business, and this is the consideration of opting out of the provisions of Public Act twenty-nine, twenty-one dash twenty-nine pertaining to accessory dwelling units. And we're going to discuss with the select. That we just finished the discussion with.
All right, any, any discussion on this one?
Well, what's the thought about uh voting on this one tonight? I think we. Everybody in agreement? Okay, Andy? Okay. Frustrating. All right. Yes, go ahead.
Since this is the one item on, on our agenda as well, so Jim, do you feel like the public care is enough to give you and as a member of this board enough information to take action for this work?
Yeah. I think we.
My recommendation is that we take our action after such time as the easy to see.
That was good.
Then my one question is, um, are we shooting from the hip here, Mike? I didn't see a proposed motion. I see your recommendation. Is there proposed language for the motion?
Um, I don't have a proposed motion, but you would basically just be a motion to opt out of and has written in the, in the agenda pertaining to.
I marked up a proposal.
I can.
So I just didn't want, I figured we understand, thank you.
Does one, the one of the other commissioners want to make this motion?
I'm going to give it a shot.
Go for it.
I move that we, the planning and zoning commission opt out of Public Act twenty-one dash twenty-nine pertaining specifically to accessory dwelling units only.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion. All right, so I will uh make a motion uh to opt out of provisions of Public Act twenty-one dash twenty-nine pertaining to accessory dwelling.
I'll second that.
All right, so second and discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With that, then you'll let a business for the board of selection, I will make a motion to adjourn our portion of the eight thirty-two.
I'll second that.
Not to be able to matter or adjourned. You don't have to say.
Just a quick housekeeping check, can I run it as a joint notice of decision or?
Yes.
You guys own, okay, I'll run it as a.
As a joint. Um, and we will um somehow try to make a note of in the, we obviously did a quarter on meeting. We'll do one joint meeting.
Sprolling or something like that.
Yeah.
I'll run this, I'll run it. But we don't notice a decision to say on such and such that we're selecting and plans on double try public hearing, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah. I, I do think it's important to note now, Mike, that the um the process needs to be, I, to their majority, obviously, because we are a three-member board of which we are currently down, we have a vacancy. So we are currently each a member of our board, so without question we think that. So if anyone wants a question. Right, just in any event, there is a question, um, so we are, we are a two-member board.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I don't be offended if she's upset.
We don't want to sit around deciding.
Thank you.
So brings us to PZ dash twenty-two dash eighteen. This is the text amendment uh pertaining to modifications of five dot oh five, dot oh one, that'll do that to score. Table eight dot oh two for dimensional requirements applicant Joseph Williams. All right, discussion around this. But first of all, Mike, is this something that we should like make a formal motion around how we want to put this and have it spelled out clearly?
If you end up in a position where you're making a lot of changes, yes. This is because of the way it was written. I didn't prepare anything because not a lot of modifications necessarily to be made. So depending on where you guys land, we can talk about it. I can also just draft something up here based on what you guys decide.
All right, how's the commission feel about moving on this one tonight?
I'm fine.
Yeah, I just think we need some clarification about the quote, quote fifty percent.
Okay. We want to try to wordsmith something here.
So what do you elaborate on what you mean by clarifications? I can.
I, I'm thinking about Ralph, what Ralph had uh made mention of. I, I think I'd like to see something like that come about.
So you want to strike the, you want to leave the table as is, so that, which comes to my first point, right? Because effectively, the way that it was changed, yeah, there is some potential for your total coverage will never exceed fifty percent. You, your total lot coverage will never exceed the fifty. That doesn't change the, the previous.
It's just they simply want to make it up in asphalt versus having a building.
And because, because the lot coverage, and they talked about this the first meeting, because the way that our regs were written with twenty-five and twenty-five, they only need thirty-something. So the easiest thing for them to do would have just be to change twenty-five to thirty-five, that gets them what they want. But that, what that then does is it does potentially increase the total coverage because you can have a building at twenty-five and then a parking lot at thirty-five. So rather than do that, which gives you a net increase, they changed it to be a total combined of fifty. So that if someone exploits the regs to their fullest extent, it gets them less than what they would have normally. Because they have no intentions of building a building. If someone were to put a building on the property after they put it, put up the site, they're going to be limited to the total coverage, they don't then get another twenty-five percent. The way it's drilled down, it's still, when you're talking about the increase beyond for surface parking lots within, you know, there's so many qualifying criteria.
Yeah.
We don't even have another use that could establish such. FedEx is the only user in the DI zone that meets the criteria to even be able to establish such use. There's not like, there's another user that could come in and say, I'm going to do the same thing because they don't have that operation. So we couldn't, we could tweak that.
Seems like the fifty percent's in line with what other towns.
I see that.
Well, I'm just looking at it as like a Rubik's cube. You know, you change one and then.
Yeah.
Everything else doesn't necessarily fall into place.
Right.
Right? The total is the total, so if you have. I'm, I'm understanding that, but I'm thinking about the Rubik's cube in the back of my mind.
Yeah, I understand that, but in my mind, we're looking at a parking lot. My main concern is the traffic and so forth, which is a matter for another day's discussion.
That's true.
And, you know, they want to kind of decide whether this is viable or not based on, on what we do here and uh I think that's where we're at. So that being said, what do we want to do tonight?
I just have a quick question. Is there any off chance with all the other regulations that someone could come in and build a building bigger than twenty-five percent? And keep that, you have fifty percent, say you want to do the reverse, like thirty-five percent building and fifty percent part, is that possible? I just want to make sure.
For a building to go beyond twenty-five percent?
Yeah.
Yes. But the total lot coverage would still be stopped.
Stop at fifty, but I mean, they could potentially put a really big building, but we only want twenty-five percent building.
You gotta have so much parking.
Yeah.
They still have to be parking and setbacks and, and all of those other criteria. Yes, it is, and so this is just different ways to skin the same cat, but it's, at the end of the day, you typically want your parking to be, you do not want to have fifty percent of the coverage to be parking. You typically want to see less parking than you have for a building. If we have five acres of building, we don't want five acres of parking. You typically want the building to be the mass of coverage and then have parking. We're trying to move away from having massive season parking. Oh, in this case, yes, you could have um what you outlined, but, but still based upon the note, a DI zone lot may exceed twenty-five percent lot coverage for overflow surface parking associated with. So there's still that qualifier, it's not opening up everything.
Sounds like a speaker.
Oh, I heard something. But yes, in theory, there's, there is some opportunity, but it's still, it's still going to cap out the total at fifty.
All right, so, okay, so we're in unfinished business, but I see this appears again under new business. So we're going to vote on it, we probably should grab.
Yeah, that was.
What's going on here?
Yeah, it shouldn't be under vote.
Okay, all right, so we'll dig with it right now. I was confused a bit there. All right, so I'm going to make a motion to uh to approve EZ dash twenty-two dash eighteen text amendment pertaining to modifications of five point oh five, dot oh one, dot oh two, dot two four and table eight dot oh two, uh, eight point oh two for dimensional requirements applicant Joseph Williams. We have a second? I'll second, any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm abstaining.
Okay. So what did we get here?
What did Andy do?
Okay, all right, all right, okay.
Thank you.
All right, we'll see you soon.
Oh, we'll see you.
Make one recommendation when you're doing your parking planning, that all ins and outs head towards the highway, so someone doesn't actually turn that the other direction.
Yeah. Understand.
Well, there's a lot of work to do.
Thank you.
All right, uh. The other one here, uh, PZ dash twenty-two dash fourteen, this is our, we've been playing with this for a while. The text amendment application pertaining to the provision of cannabis establishments. I listened to the last meeting. I, you know, some of it on there, and I, Mr. Teahan gave me some consideration, because I wasn't here that night, I believe. I'd like to give him the same. And, uh, you know, have the, have the full commission here when we, when we play with this one. And I, I did get the one about like expanding the, uh, the distances.
Yeah.
That's what the attorney recommended, if we're gonna go this route.
Yeah, and just because Chris slaved the way out, I wanted to show you what I have.
Sounds good.
So you can see what we're looking at. This is in the thing, and we'll, we'll leave it up. So he put together a map to give you an idea of what the most recently revised version, which is in the regs. Includes, and so this is revised after the last meeting. Based upon the discussion and trying to not make things more complicated, effectively, you'll see the revisions for November twenty-first. We are striking all of the other uses from, from the cannabis regs. So the only thing that would be allowed would be retail.
Okay.
And then basically increasing the criteria for retail. So that it shall not be located on or within one thousand feet of state interstate eighty-four. So this red. Hashing and shaded area here is the one thousand foot buffer. And really what that does is to, to take the exits off of the, for the most part. So it takes out, um, basically, this is the TA, this is the site that we just approved for the pad. And then these pieces over here, this is, this is Love's, um, it gets, effectively gets rid of those. And then it, it prevents it from anything being located immediately off the highway.
And in the meantime, the one that's already approved, they're all set.
Right, so tha- that was the main issue, is preserving the criteria, so that we have.
I understand.
The only other thing that we did was I added something in that said, basically, shall not be located, shall be located in a building at least fifteen thousand square feet in size. So Phelps Plaza is more than fifteen thousand. Um, I have a list from the assessor of all the buildings in excess of fifteen thousand in town. And there really aren't any others that would meet all the other criteria. So we're, we're basically drilling down so that Phelps Plaza can have and continue to operate one facility. And then striking everything else, getting rid of any ability to do cultivation, um, production, all the other uses are, are out. I think that is closer to what folks are interested in.
I'm interested in that, that, that covers the bases, and it, it leaves the one that's already approved. In a good position.
The, uh, one now Phelps non-conforming, would it?
No.
Okay.
All right, I know that was a concern, so.
Cannabis agriculture program that we pay for this in school.
They changed the statute, so cannabis doesn't.
I would, I would like.
When they, when they approved cannabis laws, they amended the definition of, of agriculture in Connecticut to expressly exclude cannabis. You can have hemp, but.
So you can make rope.
We have to understand what the, from the town's perspective, we, there's, there's a process that basically we have to go through and with, with the DCP. Because they have to report their, um, monthly or annual, I think it's monthly or quarterly earnings. And then, then we have to invoice them for three percent of that to town. So how that works and how that money comes in, and then establishing a fund, it's, um. Still not, not gonna be enough to back pay our school.
I, I would like to wait until John is here for this, and his, uh, thought of me in the last meeting. You know what, one good parent deserves another.
So this is a.
Yeah.
This is a, a, a bit of a, um, deviation from where we originally started. So we'll, we need to hold a hearing and do the proper referrals for that, so if you think it's close enough, I can get that started.
All right, I'm, I'm good with that.
Just so we don't, we can kinda.
Yeah.
Keep it moving.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll do that in the interim.
Sorry, public comment?
Not yet. You, we'll get there, but it's not supposed to be about anything on the agenda, but, but we'll be there in a minute. All right, so we got that one. Discussion and approval of, uh, two thousand twenty, this is under new business item F, item two, since one was struck. Discussion and approval of two thousand twenty-three meeting dates. Anyone have any conflicts that they see in those dates? I know it's hard to.
Were we talking about the seven o'clock start on the cap? I saw those in the minutes and stuff. Were we just going seven thirty unless?
Well, we, we wanted to talk about a cap on times and, uh. And about, I. I don't think these meetings should last longer than ten o'clock.
Yeah, we, we need to do something, right? Either start early or finish it or something.
But, you know, to, to sit here after working a full day and then have to go to work the next day, you know, started, even starting at seven thirty, that's, that's, you know. Two and a half hours, I, I think that's, I think that's a pretty good run.
I think that's adequate.
You know, it's sitting down here till eleven thirty at night, you know, that's, but, you know, I, I would like to, to do that. We, well, we gotta make a, does this need to be motioned and everything or no?
No, we can, um, we can notate that at the, uh, on the meeting schedule unless. Otherwise agreed to by the commission.
Agreed. If, if there's something that we feel that strongly about where we want to go later, I'd like that option. But, you know, as a matter of course, though, I think the meeting should end by ten, at, at the latest.
Yeah, as long as you're ju- you, you're not telling someone, no, you can't participate, we're gonna, can't, we're gonna.
So we won't do that to them.
You, you can do that, even on.
Public hearing, we can continue it, there's all kinds of options. We, we made sure people were heard during the, the whole deal with the distribution center, so.
Right, you can, you can absolutely do that.
All right, uh, and the meeting dates, everyone, everyone good with those?
Yeah.
All right, when do we do the officers and everything? Is that in January?
First meeting.
Okay, first meeting in January, just for those that are new, we usually, you know, see who's gonna be the chairman or so forth. Secretary, vice chair, you know, in the first meeting in January. All right. Item G, approval of minutes.
Do we do a motion on, on, on the dates?
Oh, yeah, well, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting dates for the two thousand twenty-three calendar year.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, uh, approval of minutes, uh, is November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, November fifteen, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I, I read them, I wasn't here, but I read through the minutes and I listened to the, the online meeting, so. Item H, public participation for items not on agenda. Anyone in the, uh, public? Nick Tella?
Hey, Nick Tella, forty-nine Myrtle. I just wanted to express, uh, dissatisfaction that the, um. Regulations were not followed when it came to that cannabis store in Phelps Plaza. Again, I spoke before, you know, it said, clearly says within five hundred feet of any child daycare facility. And, uh, also states any part of a lot used as such, not, not a section of Phelps Plaza building, it says lot. Um, so the regulation clearly was, uh, not, not adhered to. And, uh, I hope somebody can challenge this, uh, at, at some level, because it is not, it's not appropriate that we can just disregard regulations. That we have on, on the books, so, thanks.
Hey, have a good night.
It was this, it was discussed with the attorney.
No, we don't go in a back and forth in public comment, Doug, and we don't, it's fine. Okay, uh.
I, I do have a question about the, sorry, so if you're just saying four year old road. I just had a question about the regulation for cannabis, and I was wondering, is there, similar to the A D U? Is there a timeframe that we're looking to put this regulation into play? Cause it seems, I apologize for my lack of understanding, that there's something in place right now, but we're putting in more restrictive regulations going forward. To kind of, uh, prevent additional distribution centers of cannabis in the town of Wellington. If my understanding is correct, please correct me. So seeing Mike's head shake, yes, are we trying to get it done in a certain period of time? Seeing that we're not voting on it tonight, that's why, it's a, it's a question.
There's no real pressing.
Nothing pressing.
Pressing timeframe, we gotta do another public hearing since we're changing it and so forth. It's in, there's no guarantee how the commission will vote when we do vote on it, so.
Correct, we can't cap, we can't cap the number of cannabis establishments in town. We can't just say, Wellington only. Right, we can't. So what we're doing is dialing in the criteria, so that other places which would support them. Cause you're, you know, you're seeing some interest in parcel, particularly along the highway and other places, sort of trying to identify where they might go. And take those locations off the eligibility list, if you will.
And that's why I was asking about timeframe, because.
It says, in other words, someone else can come along and put in an application like right now.
Correct.
Would still require a public hearing, still require them to meet the criteria that are on the books now.
Trying to avoid the pain and suffering by saying, is there a timeline that we want to have it done by?
So this, uh, based upon that, I will schedule a public hearing, so we have to refer to CROG and then schedule the hearing. So this will go to hearing, um, in January. So we're, we're talking, you know, in, in the month of January, in theory, it could have the revised version on the books and, and affect it.
And that's depending like, you know, when it's commission, I'll hear the public comment, we'll go through that, then we'll have a vote, we'll see how it lands.
Okay, of course.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, uh, my correspondence. Uh, the only thing that there was, was a referral from Coventry Planning and Zoning Commission for an application that just came in. I'm just gonna verify that. It's not, uh. Concerning, um. So the regulation amendment. Oh, it's, so Coventry is, is, um, going through the process to consider and adopt cannabis regulations. Um, so they're, they're proposing, um. Some of this stuff looks very similar. So it's just a, a copy of their, their proposed cannabis regulations.
Okay. All right, item J, staff report and discussion. Item one is the S T C moratorium.
Yeah, so you, you, just to keep everybody in the loop, because of, uh, the Thanksgiving holiday, we couldn't get the postings. It specified in the proper days to have a hearing for time, so that would be at the next meeting. So that'll be a public hearing to consider an adoption of a temporary moratorium on the S T C. Based upon what was written and revised two meetings ago now. So that'll be a public hearing to set that and set that to be effective.
Okay, brings us to item K, adjournment, it is, uh. Fifty-five P M, meeting adjourned.